Welcome, everybody. It's 6:28, 2016, 7:00 PM. City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and start off by recognizing groups or individuals. And then we'll be the swearing in of our new police officer, Mr. Cook. I'm going to come forward, please. Oh, we got two police officers, right?
Yeah, yeah. She's...
You have a badge, too?
Yeah. No, she doesn't need one, so that's it.
Do you want to raise your hand? Okay, I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
...and be faithful and true...
And be faithful and true...
...to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
...so long as I continue...
So long as I continue...
...a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
...and I will faithfully execute...
And I will faithfully execute...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
...the position of police officer...
The position of police officer.
...according to law.
According to law.
And I do further solemnly swear...
And I do further solemnly swear...
...that since the adoption...
That since the adoption...
...of the present Constitution...
Of the present Constitution.
...I being a citizen of this state...
That I being a citizen of this state...
...have not fought a duel with deadly weapons...
That I have not fought a duel with deadly weapons...
...within the state...
Within the state.
...nor out of it.
Nor out of it.
Nor have I sinned or accepted...
Nor have I sinned or accepted.
...a challenge to fight a duel...
A challenge to fight a duel.
...with deadly weapons...
With deadly weapons.
...nor have I acted as second...
Nor have I acted as second.
...in carrying a challenge...
In carrying a challenge.
...nor aided or assisted...
Nor aided or assisted.
...any person thus offending...
Any person thus offending.
So help me God.
So help me God.
His daughter wants to pin the badge on him, so we'll let her do that.
I'll put my vest on.
Okay. Number two, we've received some input from the public. Anybody want to say anything? Ladies? Ladies in the back? We'll let number three. Bids, contracts, and proposals. The service requests us to be the Jerry Riley wastewater treatment plant headworks improvement bid. That would be from Horizon. Larry, do you want to talk about that or anything?
Just a little bit. That's painting the headworks intake structure, which is corroding with hydrogen sulfide gases. The force man gets to the plant, and it needs protection. And I believe it's an epoxy-type finish. And we've got two good bids. They're out-of-state companies, but they, of course, will be bonded and swallowed. This could be in order in a good bid.
And does Horizon oversee the quality of...
I think she'll take mixed-site visits. And we will figure out there, so...
Appreciate you, Larry. I recommend accepting the bid for Jerry Riley wastewater treatment headworks improvement for mechanical jobbers for $94,350.
Second. First, second. Discussion? Motion's on the floor to accept the bid for the Jerry Riley wastewater treatment plant headworks improvement from mechanical jobbers at $94,350. All in favor?
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion's adopted. Thank you. All right, we'll go to number two, which will be our number four, rather. HRB, DROB, and planning and zoning recommendations.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay. Amended COA 1631 Frank and DeeDee Smith applicant owners propose to add shutters to the house at 218 North Fourth Street. The amendment: The homeowner will decide if the shutter will be a solid panel or solid louvered shutter and approved by the preservation coordinator. The color of the shutters and the hardware will be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator at 218 North Fourth Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of the shutters with the amendments made during the meeting. COA 1643 Lanning and Cecilia Baker applicant owners propose to paint the front porch trim and chimney at 216 East Plage Street. The front porch roof would be free lime blue. The front porch floor would be gropius gray. The front door would be shaker red. The house would remain white, and both chimneys would be painted black. Recommendation: Approval of the proposed paint colors for 216 East Plage Street. COA 1650 Edlin Signs applicant Leon Playwell owner propose to add two signs at 202 West Stephen Foster Avenue, Suite A. Recommendation: Approval of the sign design and colors at 202 West Stephen Foster Avenue, Suite A. 1646 will pass. 1647 Tom Durbin applicant Rosemary Hurst owner propose to replace the exterior light fixtures at 104 East Broadway Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of the proposed light fixtures to the front of 104 East Broadway Avenue. Amended COA 1648 Tom Durbin applicant Rosemary Hurst owner propose to change the exterior wall color at 104 East Broadway Street. Amendment: That the front door will be painted the mockboard back with the side lights in current color, and the trim will be the current color. The exterior of the house will be painted Hampshire gray. Recommendation: Approval of the exterior colors of the house with the amendments made during the meeting. COA 1649 Tom Durbin applicant Rosemary Hurst owner propose to change the roof color at 104 East Broadway Street. Recommendation: Approval to paint the roof black at 104 East Broadway Street. COA 1644 Tom Durbin applicant Rosemary Hurst owner propose to move the chimney to an alternate location at 104 East Broadway Street. Recommendation: Denial to rebuild the chimney is a different location other than where it was originally located. COA 1645 was withdrawn due to the lack of attendance.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to accept this token review board recommendation for approval for COA 1631, 1643, 1650, 1647, 1648, 1649.
And 1644.
You said 1644, and you left out 1645.
Well, he was five.
Yeah, and 1644, I believe, is the one they recommended.
Right.
And so, yeah, and you would accept their recommendation?
Oh, yes. Yes, I will. 1644.
Thanks.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's on the floor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion's adopted. Thank you, guys. If there's no correspondence. Review of the minutes of the... Number six, review of the minutes, city council meeting of 6:14, 2016. Oh, in the special council meeting of 6:16, 2016. If there's no objection, I'll do that, approve the minutes by unanimous. Thank you, guys. Financial report to CETA annual budget FY 2016-17. You guys want to look at that?
It's essentially the same as this year.
What's it called? About $100,000?
$600,000.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to these...
Yeah, about $100,000.
Annual budget.
Second. Thank you.
Motion's on the floor to approve the CETA 2016-17 budget. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion's adopted. Thank you, guys. You want to look at Main Street's budget?
There's no way here to discuss that, but the only thing I noticed, which they haven't read, is that they took out the beer festival. Does anybody... That was something that they were doing to kind of get that going, and they were going to back away from it, right?
I think that was a one-time...
I think it was two times, but...
Was it two times?
Now, I think they're letting...
It was two years in a row, and the next gen has created their own 501(c)(3), and they're on their own.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, I'll make a motion to approve Barstown Main Street budget for 1617.
Motion's on the floor for the approval of Main Street's budget 2016-17. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Does oppose? Motion's adopted. Thank you. Let's do the first reading of... I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Number C, discussion of possible changes in the revenue stream. Fred, you have the floor.
Yeah, I put that on the agenda. It's just kind of carrying on with the discussion I started last couple of meetings about the funding of our budget, the discussion of using the utility revenues to fund the general fund. And I've just had some things I wanted to just briefly talk about, just looking at some of the things we've done in the past, just and looking at the next three-year... The three-year plan that was given to us when we did the budget from all the departments. Just looking at some of the things that we have down the road. And just pointing out again that if we pass the budget, we're talking about passing tonight, which I assume we'll pass, at the end of next year, again, our unrestricted reserves in the combined utilities is going to be about $2 million, because we're using about 3.2 million of it. And, you know, and we've talked about what that was in the past. And also, in years past, the utility, we've talked about this, the revenue stream in utilities and how it helps our general fund. And over the last, going back to 2010, '11, we were doing like 2.8 million. That was a banner year. Then it's 200,000, 300,000, 600,000, 400,000. And then this current year is $510,000. That's the excess revenue in our utilities that goes into our unrestricted fund. The budget we're getting ready to pass here tonight, I think, has 22,000 of that reserves. So in other words, the budget we're getting ready to pass has no extra. It has no... At the end of the year, we will essentially have spent all of the money in the utility fund, either in the general fund or in the utility fund. And thus, our unrestricted reserves continues to go down. So we end up with about, like I said, about $2 million in unrestricted. And if you look at our three-year plan, just in the sewer department, in fiscal year '18, there's 1.6 million planned for the Wither Creek, 1.1 million in the next year for the Roan Creek, and then 1.3 million the next year. So in those three years, that's $3.9 million in capital expenditure in our utilities. And I encourage all of us to understand how we're going to fund that. Because at the end of this fiscal year, we will not... We will barely have enough in our reserves to fund the next year, much less the next year thereafter. It's just something we... We need to understand that, that we... That road has... It's... We can't continue that way. We cannot fund... If you just look at the numbers, it's just... Take the rhetoric out of it, take the motion out of it. We either have to have more income or spend less in our infrastructure. And I encourage... I invite anybody to prove me wrong. I mean, because when I look at it, I just don't see it. This budget we're getting ready to pass has $3.2 million more in spending than in revenue. That's... And I don't mind spending the money, don't get me wrong. We have reserves. We need to spend the money on things. I'm not... It's not the spending side I'm worried about. I mean, I think we're spending it properly. It's the income stream that I'm concerned about. And we must, all seven of us, must understand this and have a plan for the next three to five years of how we're going to do this. So let's just...
I'd like to make a comment, sir.
I'm just...
The city has seven revenue resources. That's about $49 million revenue growth. If it was analyzed and evaluated before the two separations took place, that had created city many, many, many dollars expenses, the city would have had some revenue actually and would draw a conclusion. And what I indicated is kind of summarize this revenue up in this nutshell. That's my comment.
Well, Fred, I do agree with you. We have an infrastructure that we have... We have done a lot with in the last 18 months, 19 months. We've done a lot with it. We have a tremendous amount of work that is being done on the water treatment plant. We have more to come with that. And we can't... Myself or any other council cannot keep passing the buck and not taking care of the infrastructure. It's always... Since I've been on the council since 2005, I guess Fred and I have passed the sewer and water treatment back and forth, being head of that committee. We've both seen that, and it's something that is needed, and I think every citizen in Barstown has always expected that and wanted it, so...
I'm going to agree with Fred. We need to... The money being spent correctly, the need to, in the future, we might have to make some cuts, or we're going to have to find another revenue stream. And a question I have for Tracy. What kind of reserve are we talking about having at the end of July?
End of June, I've estimated.
End of June, excuse me.
Yeah, that's correct. The end of June, I've estimated around $4 million. And then with the current use of the unrestricted reserves, if we get the loan, as Councilman Hagan has stated, we would have about $2 million over at the end of next year, in the next fiscal year.
So $4 million at the end of June.
Mrs. Javard, I'd just like to point out, recently, to me, the only reason we borrowed money is we don't have it, and this makes no sense, but... We brought $2.3 million at 2%. The first year, you're going to spend like $43,000 in interest. Be just about $41,000 the next year. We can't borrow our way out of this. You can't borrow your way out of a financial problem. It's... I'm not saying we shouldn't bond and break them, but...
I have a question for Tracy. If we implement, say, the occupational tax that I voted for last time, if we vote for it, when will it be able to come into effect, and when will the revenue generated off that tax increase, when will we be able to receive it?
If we start discussing in the fall, probably make effective date January. If you wait until after January 1 of next year, then you'll have to wait until the following year, January 1 of 2018.
So anything implemented before January of 2017 would be within that next budget?
If you implemented something in the fall and took effect January 1 of 2017, you have six months of revenue that would help this year's budget.
I still... My opinion again is, I think, the occupational tax increase is the way to go. 60% of our workforce is coming in from outside the county, outside of other cities. They're going back to their cities, spending that money in their towns and not in our city. They use our infrastructure and are not utilizing it. And we still got the lowest occupational tax in all the surrounding counties, the way I understand. I got a lot negative feedback on the insurance tax. People not real susceptible to that. Maybe the best way to go, I'm not sure, but they're scared of a tax to implement the new tax, and they're afraid that the council will keep building on it every year. That's what I'm getting back to the public. But so, I think we need to just increase the taxes that we already have in place and see what they generate. And I think the occupational tax is the fairest way to go across the board.
Sure. Are you done?
Yes, ma'am.
Tracy, did you say that with the loan, we would be down to $2 million, is what you said?
Probably around $2 million.
Where are we with that right now?
With the loan? We are waiting on Lincoln Trail. We have to get our profile within, and then after that, I'll send in an application to KIA.
So we're waiting on them for a response?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I also remember last year that we said we would revisit this, and I do believe that we owe it to the constituents to make sure that we make a fair and just decision. We definitely can't keep going the way we are. We made a decision last year to do something. As we can tell, that's not enough. It's not going to be enough. And so, we need to look at options to make sure that the city is funded. I have a question in regards to... This is with the budget, too, though. When we did the Paul Combs study, the initial price for that was $11,000. Is there any way that you could give me the amount for what we were actually charged for the Paul Combs study? My question in reference to that is with the raises, the 4% to 3% raises. When I came into the last council meeting that we had, after thinking about this even more, I still think it's skewed. The gap is going to increase even more. And from what I hear, we need to save money everywhere. But when I think about the people that make under $20 an hour, and then the people that make over $20 an hour, we're trying to make sure that they're actively paid, not bridge so much a gap, but just make sure that they're paid accordingly. And I know that's not changing anyone's mind or anything. I'm just, you know, with the Paul Combs study, it was a set amount. You know, we were supposedly brought them up to what they need to be. But when we reevaluated, we saw that, per se, the garbage workers, sanitation workers, customer service, our frontline people still were not making what they possibly can make if they just left our city workplace and went and worked in a factory. So that's the only reason I'm bringing that up about the, you know, the Paul Combs study, how much it was, things of that nature. But I definitely know that we do need to look at options for other revenue. And we said that we was going to do this last year, and we should be man enough to look at those options now. We owe it to the people in the city of Barstown to do the right thing.
I didn't get the amount. I wasn't... That study started before I put this position, and I'll just have to look right at it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Shittes has come up. I just... It's worth noting for all of us to realize that when we vote on this budget, we are not voting... The budget contains salaries that equate to a 3% or 4% let alone cover that. But we are not voting on that. The budget does not dictate that the mayor do those raises. He is free to take that money and spend it as he sees fit. Correct me if I'm wrong. Within the confines of the compensation classification plan. So although we've talked about it, and that's how we framed the budget, and not... It's happened, and I'm not saying it will, but just so we realize, when we vote on this, we are not dictating 3% raise for this people and 4% for these people. We are putting in an amount of money that... So I just think it's worth going.
If you... The Paul Combs study, it actually gives a pay range. And just for a pure example is if Bobby is... If Bobby is working in the sanitation department, and his pay range is from $10 to $15. You know, the mayor has that right that I can move him from... If he can make him from $10, I can give him to $15, as long as that department's budget will withstand that. You see what I'm saying? Now, and those raises have been given out in the past, a great deal. And that's within the discretion area of the mayor to do that, if he wants to do it. So, yeah, that's to kind of give you an example of what Fred said. Add a little few more numbers to what Councilman Buckman said. And the exact numbers, do not quote me exact numbers, but the exact... The numbers that the occupational tax will affect is around 200 to 2,800 people in the city. And then the people that live outside the city or outside the county is about 6,000 to 9,000 that come in, come inside the city to work. But you have a whole group of people that leave the city and work in Eetown and Louisville, and they pay 1 and 1/2 to 2% occupational tax to those cities because they use their infrastructure. So I agree with you, Councilman Buckman, on that. But we have a great deal of people that live outside this city, outside this county. And I think it's... Larry, do you remember those numbers?
Well, I just remember, I thought it was 20%...
Something like that?
...in the city, live in the city. Now, that work in the city, and about 80% are imported.
Yeah, the live outside the city or even outside this county, they come in and use our police, they use our fire, they use our rescue, they use our water, they use everything that the city is providing. So it's a great deal, a large amount of people that come inside the city to use it. So just to kind of build on that, you know what I'm saying?
And if I could, Mayor, I understand what everybody's saying, but I don't want to make it sound like because somebody doesn't live in the city, we're penalizing them.
No, no, no. I'm just... I'm drawing that it's not just going to be a city person paying this. That's what I...
I'd like to send y'all a spreadsheet that shows the taxes, both the tax rate and the tax revenues in the top 60 cities in Kentucky. We're right in the middle of that. And you'll see, just if you look at the numbers, it's... And with a growing town like Barstown, where you have a full-time fire department, a lot of police and so on, in a growing community, how are you going to avoid raising the revenue? So I'll send you all those. It's 2013 League of Cities numbers, and I've done a little math over the rights. You'll see, just dividing by per resident. And it's not clunked and valid, but it's really, you look at it for a while, you'll see what we're not charging and what others do. And I just don't know, you know, pick your poison. I mean, you got to do something to fund this general fund deficit.
May I ask something, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a problem comparing Barstown with other cities. Unless you analyze and evaluate all aspects, a lot of cities in Kentucky, the Barstown side, do not have, do not have seven revenue resources, right?
That's why...
I'm serious about it because you're trying to compare...
That's why we don't have these other taxes.
I have a problem you comparing Barstown with other cities when we have seven resources, revenue. There's no other small city in Kentucky that has seven revenue resources, right? I don't believe it's no other small city here in Kentucky that has seven revenue...
There are seven.
I mean, combined utilities.
And most of them have separated utilities out.
Right, combined utilities.
All the problems associated with this conversation. They're planboards. And so, yes, there are some, but they've separated the utilities out so as not to co-mingle these funds. But leaving that argument aside, I like where we are, like you do. But if we were to raise a rate to pay for a big hole in the fire department, that would be unfair to those rate payers. So you have to keep competitive rates in utilities so as you don't ruin that business model. And you have to then raise general funds if you're growing, if you have a growing general fund, police and fire and rec. But that's, I mean, that's where it has to come from. Otherwise, somebody, the former CFO, or maybe even two of them, have said, y'all have got to watch that. And because there's a law that says you can't raise the money from utilities, it's not surplus. So if we were to keep this whole, this argument we're having about where would the, how would we fund the general fund? And you just say raise the utility rate, we could get defeated in court. It depends whether there are surpluses after the fact or if they're, you're funding a general fund through the other customer base. Then the people who are not being favored, whose rates are higher, have a true argument to say, you all are passing it on just to city electric customers and not the other city customers. It's unfair. You can make another argument, I won't try to defeat the city utility practice, but it would be awful hard in today's time for us to raise a rate, a utility rate.
But what's your...
With no tax, with the hold that you have in the revenue stream from general governmental taxation.
But when comparing, Councilman Lydian, when you compare to other cities, you just can't look at just us and City A and City B?
Well, I just have a problem comparing...
Okay, hang on just a minute. Listen, hear me out.
Okay, I'll hear you.
Thank you. So what you do is if you go to look, you just can't look at, well, City A and City B. You have to take Barstown, and then you take City B and look at, well, look at their occupational tax. Usually those City Bs are, that doesn't have the other utility income like what we have. Those other, those other cities have a higher occupational rate of like 1%, 2%, 2 and 1/2%. They also have insurance tax, one other taxes they got, Larry?
Hotel tax, insurance tax, mid-fee income tax, property tax.
They raise their property taxes and all that. So with us having all those utility funds that you greatly so talk about is, and that's why we are able to be able to keep our taxes down and not raise those taxes like these other small cities when you do a comparison, so.
As I indicated, I have a problem trying to compare Barstown with other cities. And just like you indicated, look what the revenue that they got coming in. They're not like Barstown. They got all them taxes. And we got seven, we're fortunate to have seven revenue resources and to maintain, in the past, we maintained a balanced budget and probably keep the taxes down low, keep the expenses down low. And like I indicated, $49 million gross, we need to utilize that dollar, analyze and evaluate it before you jump up and have one track mind about something. That's what I said. That's probably what we've been having. We have less revenue and we have made good progress in Barstown, but we just spend too much money.
Go ahead.
I see what you're... Francis is right that the utility does bring in law revenue. And that's from our forefathers, yada, yada, was a good thing. But that is not keeping up with the growth of the city. We are fortunate not to have tourist tax. We don't have insurance premium tax. We don't have a high property tax. We don't have high...
Occupational...
Occupational tax. That's how we keep these low. And that's what I think he's trying to say by utilization of our utilities. But we can't keep using the utilities because it's not keeping up with the growth of the budget. Is that it in a nutshell?
In a nutshell, I have my opinion, you have your opinion.
I'm disagreeing with you, Francis.
I'm agreeing with you, I tell you my opinion.
I didn't tell you any better. I'm agreeing with you.
You're trying to change my mind. My mind is already made...
I was just trying to clarify the point.
All right.
That we don't have these taxes for the reason that you're saying.
And it takes more than you to change my mind.
I thought you guys were...
Yeah, all right.
Well...
Goodbye, y'all.
The question I would have is, Councilman Hagan, we're not going to resolve anything here tonight.
I'm not just...
Where do you see this going? Is this something that we refer to the Finance Committee?
All I was asking each councilman was to understand it and to think about what should we do. And we'll have that discussion later. I just want to get it on everybody's mind to understand, understand. And then once you've understood it, then think about it. Some of that discussion we've had, I mean, that's related, I think.
Well, the thing, what I was asking is, is this something that the Finance Committee should...
I think it's a good place to start. Because, you know, all we'll do is we're going to take all those options to look at that light. It's maybe a long word, but all those options to look at that light.
We don't do it for...
They're all still there. It's just to...
And it's going to be to the council.
Well, why don't you...
I'm sorry, we're having two discussions.
I'm sorry. So why don't you, if you think that way, and you want to call Finance Committee, who's on that?
Rowan needs chair.
Rowan needs chair.
To me, that's...
I'm sorry. Get with me, let's call Finance Committee, just start the discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to say something. I understand the discussion that we're having right now, and I think it's a good one. However, we had all this information last year. We had every bit of it, the pie charts on the wall, the demonstration, the chatter in the audience, what have you. We had all of this last year. We really know what's going on. But the main thing, I don't hear anyone saying, saying, okay, let's go back to the finance. Okay, that's cool. But what happens after that? Because my main thing is, you know, the ones of us that do answer the phone and the emails, it seems like the public is left out. We have an option, and I want to discuss this. We have an option to move meetings sometimes. And we never do it. We know that the hallway is going to be packed. And it's wall to wall in here. We never move it so that they can be a part of this, so they can understand what's going on and not hear it through the media, to hear it for themselves, for the ones that want to come. So that's all I'm asking. It's something for you to think about, to keep, you know, fresh up here, is that when we do talk about these discussions, let's include the community in on this. Because it is for them, it's about them. You know, we're making decisions for them. So let's let them hear firsthand what's going on. Let's let them hear these discussions. That's all I really wanted to say in reference to that. Thank you.
Let's move on then. Ordinance is, first reading would be 2016 and Commercial Establishment Design Standards Amendments.
I would like to introduce proposal ordinance B-2016, Commercial Establishment Design Standards Amendments, and ask that it be read in summary.
This ordinance will amend and replace in its entirety Section 157.08 Review Procedures to provide for administrative review of proposals to build new commercial structures or proposals to add to existing commercial structures. The amendment authorizes and establishes an administrative review committee and specifies the types of proposals that may be reviewed by that committee. The process and procedures for administrative review are established as well as the process for appeal to and/or review by the entire review board, the Development Review Board and the Barstown City Council as a legislative body with jurisdiction within the city limits of Barstown. The amendment also shortens the time period within which the legislative body must act from 90 days after review board action to 60 days after review board action. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
So this is the same process we did for...
This was the presentation that Jan made with, along with David Mattingly, a couple of months back about they were wanting to do shortened review.
But we've already done that. We've already shortened the review.
I'm planning zone.
Planning zone.
Planning zone.
That's what I was...
Yes. This is in regard to Development Review Boards.
Yes.
It's first reading, no vote. So we're going to go to B, be the second reading, which will require a vote. B-2016-06, the annual budget, FY-2016-17.
Ordinance number B-2016-06, An Ordinance Adopting the City of Barstown, Kentucky Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of the City Government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council, and whereas the city council has received such a budget proposal and made desired modifications. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Barstown Commonwealth of Kentucky, Section 1, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017 is hereby adopted as attached heretofore, and Section 2, that this ordinance shall become effective upon approval and publication as required by law.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number B-2016-06.
Second, Councilman Buckman. Now, okay, motion's on the floor for B-2016-06, Annual Budget for 2016-17 and FY-17, 3% to 4% raises. So I'll start with Councilman...
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry, discussion?
Yeah, just a comment about the budget. I think we did a good job working this budget out and everything. The one thing I really don't like about it is the way we're funding it. But we have some discussion on that. There's some other things I don't like. I think there's some things all of us don't like. But I think since we all realize our job is to pass a budget, that is what we're going to do. I'd really like for it to be unanimous vote when we vote on it. Especially since the 3%, 4% that we've had discussed is really not part of what we're voting on. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Discussion, and further discussion?
I do. The loan that we were discussing, so if that was to be approved, then we would come back with an amended budget, to do amended budget for that, or how would that work?
I'd have to find out if you have to amend it. Because right now, it shows transferring from unrestricted reserves.
Okay.
Replace that with a loan.
Do you have individual votes? Councilman Buckman? Hello? Any votes?
No.
Aye.
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 No. I want to claim my vote.
Yes, sir. Ms. Buck, go ahead.
Well, first off, there's been a lot said here tonight. Some of it I agree with, some of it I disagree with. And we all got different opinions. Now, we've let it out, we've led the people. And you're talking about one people here. We're leading the people to think that we abandoned the electric, the water, and the sewer and what have. We spent a lot of money on the water, sewer, electric, and what have. We haven't abandoned them, they just had a profit. And this profit, I don't see no reason why we use it. There's a lot of talk that you need more money. Now, maybe, and I think somebody in this crowd made the comment a while ago, that maybe we need to look at our spending. I mean, yes, there's a lot of things that we need and probably we think we need. But there's things in this budget that personally, and I've had comments from the public, that they think we don't need. Now, but if we keep, we keep spending, you're absolutely right, friend. You got to have some money. But I can't spend any more money than I've got coming in. And I think we need to do, fine line the budget a lot more than we have with this council this year. That's my opinion.
I agree with you, Councilman, because I kind of trust on that, and maybe some of my comments. I agree with you. We need to start spending and utilize and analyze and evaluate all aspects and possibly you could come to a conclusion, or you'll have extra money.
Okay, let's move on. Reports from the staff of committee. Chief, you got anything?
No, sir.
Tracy?
Yeah, I just have a comment. As far as the, I understand Councilman Lydian's side on the utilities. But as you increase that need for revenue in the general fund, you're reducing the expenditures that each department is able to spend each year because we're transferring money as a dividend or an indirect cost. And then if there's a purchase, yes, we're using unrestricted reserves. The unrestricted reserves is basically our checking account. And if we don't have the money in the checking account, we can't pay bills. And I understand Councilman Lydian would like to cut costs. Councilman Sensen would like to cut costs. If you come in and see what it is that we purchased in our day-to-day, when I see the monthly financial report, it blows my mind. But I understand what we're spending on and why we have to have the certain things. This is my comment.
No comment.
I'm not going to comment on y'all's.
I got a comment. I think that we did a good budget. I think we still need to look at different revenue. Talking about cutting back on spending. I think past administrations have done the same thing. And that's why we don't have sidewalks, that's why we're five years behind on blacktopping. I think that's why our infrastructure is not in good shape. I think it's fell on this administration and on our backs to get it back to where it should be. We got more factories coming in. We got to keep our roads up, we got to keep everything up, we got to keep our utilities up. We got customers, average customers, we got cable. It takes a lot of money to operate. And I don't think we're, I think we're being pretty conservative with our money. I'm new at this, but I think, you know, you got to spend money to make money. And if you want to cut services, then so be it. But people want services. Because, you know, they don't want to pay for it, but they want services. So I think we're doing fine. But if we're going to keep growing, Barstown's growing, we keep, and we're going to have to do something. They want them roads, they want them sidewalks, they want them services. And somebody's got to pay for it.
But Larry Hamilton?
Larry, I'm sorry.
Today I got a request from a company called Kentucky Back Hall. And they've asked for a franchise. And we're not ready to maybe act on that. Tim has heard something about it. But we're talking to our also a law attorney that helps us on telecommunications. helps us on telecommunications. Anyhow, they, um, this particular thing, they went on scent, and they wanted to build a 75-foot pole, it crossed the street from, uh, the donut shop, Hater's, and another one out by, across from Maxine's Place, and then another one at, um, Garden Park, uh, intersection of, um, Honey Supple and, uh, the next street down, from, uh, well, anyway, I've forgotten the name. The third street, uh, deputy, I believe it is, yeah. So, anyhow, they, they proposed to do, and I think Jeff told me they're called like microcell, and, uh, this would take in, uh, cell phone signals, they're like a telephone company backhauling company, or cellphone deal. And so, I thought that we should bring Cheryl's attention that it's on our radar, and we're gonna be working, and most likely would give them a franchise, they have, they have a franchise, they, they're regulated by the PSC. So, I would like to turn it over to the planning zoning and let them think about the location of these towers. They really have asked it beyond the street. I don't particularly like having a 70-foot pole, uh, in front of Hater's, personally. I don't like their location, but I'm not opposed to their project, I just, uh, so it's gonna take some conversation. This is the first written correspondence I've had on it, and they formally asked it. So, we know, knew it's coming, but it's come, and then you all, you'll have to work on some, and then come back to...
There will, there will be a proposed ordinance, there's a draft ordinance out there talking about permitting, and then there's the franchise element of it, and my understanding that these are poles where you have high demand, often they're related to, believe it or not, they're related to high schools. You have high demand around high schools in, in area, downtown areas, so the Hater's would probably be aimed at, uh, in part at Bardstown High School.
In Bethlehem.
In Bethlehem, probably in between. So, the, it's usually related to high-demand areas that they can then transfer that data somehow, it's a technical thing, but anyway, it's a, it is an up-and-coming thing, microcells, they're not the big cell towers, they're smaller, high-demand area cell towers, and so, um, it can be reviewed and, and regulated in some respects by the Planning Commission, and so they'll probably be involved, and, but it's, like Larry said, it is on radar screen, we have, uh, an attorney that specializes in the area that's helping with draft ordinances and permitting requirements and questionnaires, so that will be for your future consideration.
A 70-foot tower in the historic district?
That's what I was asking. Well, they asked, but just...
Okay.
So, yeah, that, that's, that jumped out at me, is, and I'm not, I'm not really wanting to destroy their location, but if they can move it or move it to a less, uh, obvious place than why I named it, is I think they might work with us on that. But then from there, I guess they'll have wire, stringing wires either underground or overhead, through and on other carriers maybe, or set their own poles. So, there's a lot of questions, we're working up an application for them to fill out some of the questions we had, so we're working on it, but, uh, I guess it'll probably go to some committee when we get closer, so we're, uh, just what I thought you should know in case you hear something about it. Um, we, uh, working on it along with KIA, and we have another project following in water that would be, uh, dealing with our tri-helomethane problems and so on, and you offer chloramines, and we're looking into that. And so, we may be coming to you for another proposal on that budget, but that's, uh, on our minds, so, uh, one of the things we have to do is to run our utility company and beat all the rules and regulations, that's part of our duties, and that costs money to stay in compliance with the rule, and that's one reason we spend more and more every year. So, you'd be reading the paper, well, they're having, their rates are higher than ours, and they're taking Frankford, all these river cities, are spending big, big money, like over a billion dollars, trying to come, separate their sanitary sewer and their storm sewer. And we have been working on that, we're just fortunate we're not as old and as big, and we're on a pretty well-drained place, and our creeks are open channels. So, at any rate, uh, we're all dealing with, uh, those, uh, water, uh, freshwater, cleanwater rules, and it runs our costs up. And, uh, as does the water sewer, cable, electric, and all, all that, the rules are getting stiffer, and the, as you say, the, uh, competition is growing, I mean, it's like this, it's all, you know, people that are want, uh, self-service or any kind of service, backhaul, internet, and so on, and the public is demanding more services all the time. So, I think you have to keep up or get, you lose. So, that's all I have.
I'd say, uh, that's called aggression, be progressive, get rid of the old lamps and the wagon wheels and move on. Okay, so, yeah, it's called progress. Uh, let's go to, uh, let's get number 10, and go to number 11, Municipal Order M-2016-9, Fire and Police Job Description Amendments.
A municipal order amending job descriptions in their entirety for the fire and police department employees, originally established in Municipal Order Number M-2015-16. Whereas, the Bardstown Fire and Police Departments received their final report from the Classification and Compensation Plan Study in June of 2015 for all job descriptions within departments, and whereas all new job titles within the fire and police require approval by the Kentucky Retirement System Board, and whereas the Kentucky Retirement System Board approved the positions and their corresponding job descriptions as hazardous duty positions within the county employees' retirement system. Now, therefore, be it ordered by the City Council of Bardstown, Kentucky, that the job descriptions attached hereto be adopted in full to represent the true and accurate amended definitions for the fire and police department positions available as an employee of the City of Bardstown.
I make a motion to accept Municipal Order M-2016-09, Fire and Police Job Description Amendments, as read, you're the floor, second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed? Most of them got it. Thanks, guys. We'll do, uh, B, it'll be Chapter 97 on the 911 Emergency Service. Mr. Butler, turn me the volume.
Yep, thank you. We're on the survey. I'm on E02, you wanna put that in there? Uh, the, um, this is the, uh, this is an ordinance that we already have that we will be amending, but, um, here pretty quickly, I assume, uh, once we've worked out details on, uh, what we're gonna do with the E-911 Dispatch. Uh, it provides for, as you can see, it provides for, um, the, uh, 911 fees through Bell South, and, and talks about, uh, raising that with the cost of living index and things of that nature, but we'll be replacing this probably in total with something that matches hand and glove with what, uh, we do with the Dispatch. So, as much as anything, we wanted to give you all a heads up that this would be, uh, a, uh, basically a finishing touch, it will, um, it will, it will, well, it may be actually the precursor, because it does, uh, talk about, uh, enabling the mayor to enter inter-agreement, but, uh, we're going to, um, be matching this with what we do with the inter-local agreement, which I am pretty close to having a draft for.
Good.
Just wanted to give you all a heads up that that would be coming.
Number 12, City Council members' comments. Okay? Sematary Dean's, uh, we have one, or is it Claudia?
Alaskas.
Alaskas, okay. And, if, if there's no objections, I'd be glad to have that approved. Yes, thank you. And announcements will be working session for July the 5th, 2016. What's your thoughts?
You know, I'd like to speak to that. Um, I, I understand that you're thumbs down on it, but I think the working session is necessary for us, regardless if you cancel July the 5th and put it on the 6th, or what have you, but I don't, I don't think we should be skipping any working sessions, I think we need a, we need them all. We need to use those sessions to openly discuss things that are going on within the council, and to educate ourselves further. So, I mean, I, I don't understand why we would cancel a working session at this point in time. I mean, we have before, but I didn't understand it then, so I'm, I'm just asking, why is that an option? Why, why do we, I mean, because there are plenty things that we could go over, um, for working sessions. I remember speaking with Mr. Butler, and, you know, he was like, "Yeah, have a working session." I, 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 I don't know, can you?
Well, if there's, if there's matters to be discussed, or, or what we had talked about is issues, the, um, the social media policy, the travel policy, um, to, you know, finalize or flesh those out, to work on, on drafts of those, and so when there's issues like that that are pending, um, working sessions often provide the opportunity to, to hash out details and come to some consensus, um, as you're, you know, doing a final draft of an ordinance that will be adopted. And so, I, you know, when there's matters that need to be discussed, I think that working sessions are important. If there's not anything to be discussed or to be worked on, then I'm not sure that you'd wanna just come in for a, you know, let's talk about it session, but...
I have something planned, so I won't...
Yeah, I, 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 those are two good topics to talk about, I'm just thinking that July the 5th, I'd like, I'd like to move some other day, in, in July 5th.
I would also.
I mean, the 6th.
If you change the date, then you'll have to make it agenda-specific, it can't be just an open discussion.
Which kind of, which kind of ruins the working session.
Right.
Kind of, yeah, it ruins the, the need for...
Mayor, what about the Thursday that we have in the Finance Committee meeting? That's, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that's, I think the committee meeting, I think you need to have that before having this working session. And then you can, then we can discuss all of that, what the Finance Committee discussed, and then have a working session. What would that be, Barney?
Um, that Thursday, the 7th.
Okay. Six o'clock, about six?
Usually about six. Is that okay? Can we sign that with you? Fred? Okay. But you do need to make a decision on this working session, because if you cancel it, I have, I have things I have to do to make sure the public knows.
Bobby, do you want it?
I mean, we've got something to discuss and something to meet about, yeah, but if nobody's got anything to bring up that we're gonna talk about...
Well, if, Mayor, you get me there, I, I, I just assume I have, personally, I'd assume I have a working session if y'all kept me there, especially to make, that's it, that's my opinion.
I will not be here.
Yeah.
So, let's talk about it.
I accept Keisha's argument on having a working session, I'm all for that, especially these two topics you just talked about, I'm kinda holding the ball on a couple of those, so...
Let's just tell that to my, to my, to my, my...
We've had meetings, special meetings, they're only to get this vote, to put the vote in, I think we've done our job.
Well, I'm not saying that we're not doing our job, and I understand that it's after the holiday weekend, that, that's, that's understandable. I'm just saying going forward that we should, you know, if we can have the working session, they're there for a reason, that we should, I mean, this is a time where we can have people come in and, and, and speak to us in reference to, uh, things that the council needs to educate themselves on, so, um...
Let's have a show of hands of who wants, who wants it, who doesn't, so, who wants, who wants to go to the meeting July the 5th?
I didn't hear.
Who, who wants to have this one on July the 5th, the, the working session?
No.
No. No.
Okay? Just no, let's move on. Special council meeting, uh, will be July the 12th, 2016, at 6:30 PM.
That is the, uh, one of the historic review board matters, it's an appeal, uh, and we've done that once before, you might remember, on the roof at the corner of Broadway and Fourth Street, um, that is similar, it will be a, uh, a hearing-type, um, arrangement, and so it's a half an hour before the regular meeting, and, uh, more details will be followed on that.
And we are encouraged to not gather information outside of that meeting.
Correct. Yeah, if, if, you're not supposed to, you know, ex parte contacts, if someone calls and says, "I want to talk to you about that pro or con," you should say, "Come to the hearing at 6:30," um, and shouldn't go fact-finding on your own and doing the, you know, it's gonna be based on what you hear here, uh, in the meeting room. And, but anything that you know outside of, you know, personal knowledge, you're welcome to use that as part of the process.
And the regular meeting will follow at 7.
Correct.
Okay? And if there's no objections...
And the Finance Committee meeting.
Finance Committee meeting, when you want to do that?
July 7.
July 7.
Where would you like to have it thrown? It's gonna be special anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Still there, sitting here?
Okay.
If there's no, anything else, I'll adjourn this meeting, but I'm gonna end this session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good news.